Deliver. Good evening and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on November 9, 2021, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 27th day of October 2021. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment should virtually raise your hand using the button at the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman? Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney? Mr. Tex Arney, I didn't hear you.
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very well. You're low, but yes, we did hear you. Thanks.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Announcements. Are there any announcements from staff or board members before I make a quick note about our upcoming meetings? I'm not seeing any hands waving at me. I believe that our next meeting after tonight will be three weeks from this Thursday, December 2. We had set aside the meeting on the 18th of this month to continue to hear the ES and Cs, which we finished. So unless something comes up, I believe, Carrie, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie or Michael, I think we do not have another meeting for a little more than three weeks, which is
miraculous.
A nice little I mean
I'm sorry, Louise, did you say November 18?
November 18. We, according to my calendar, we had set aside that meeting for the Princeton Environmental Studies and School of Engineering and Applied Science, which we have finished. So do we have
You're aware, that's the last day of the League of Municipalities, so
So that's right. The League of Municipalities Conference is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week. The following week is Thanksgiving. And so the next regular meeting would be December 2. So yay.
I can remove my hold for Thanksgiving. We won't be meeting that night.
I think so, and it might be and I should also know that I think this is our seventh week in a row, so so one extra week off is I'm grateful for, and and I thank you for hanging tough these, throughout this fall. It's been extraordinarily busy and packed, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. La Place?
I just wanted to let the board and the public know that we are working on details of the contract for the Master Plan Consultant.
Thank you.
Clark Cadenhens. They need to speak to staff about some specifics. They need a little focusing information that we've asked for, so I just wanted to let the board know that's in the works. We're going to try to get that wrapped up as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Yeah, I've been I've been bugging Michael about that, and I appreciate your letting the rest of the board know about it. Okay, so no other announcements? Then we'll go on to our one and only application tonight. This is the trustees of Princeton University, a minor site plan with conditional use at 11 Hullfish Street, Block 20.04, Lot 1. This is file number P2121-118P/CO.
Madam Chair, proof of publication and service are in order. Notice is proper, and the board has jurisdiction.
Excellent. Thank you. Michael, do you want to introduce this?
Michael, you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before us this evening is an application from Princeton University to convert a retail storefront space, ground floor storefront space in Palmer Square, actually on Hullfish Street, 11 Hullfish, for use as a temporary gallery in conjunction with the Princeton University Art Museum. As we all know, the art museum, the university is building a new art museum facility on the same site of the existing museum, and this is going to take several years. And this seems like a very interesting and innovative way that the university will continue to share the arts and have, you know, some cultural programming and gallery activity going on in Princeton while the new museum is evolving. So they want to use what's been a retail space that was formerly, most recently, a clothing store. And what happens is it's permitted under our conditional use section of the ordinance. So what you'll hear this evening, I'm sure, is the university going through the conditions that are required that they need to address and to say how they meet them, and if there's any extenuating circumstances, we'll hear about that as well. So I think it might be good for us to get right into it. Again, this is just the use of an existing space, an existing storefront. There'll be some talk about signage, which will basically be limited to the window areas and the awnings that are in place. You know, there's also very uniform standards for that in Palmer Square. So that's the application before you this evening. Oh, this is within the central business zone, and it is a permitted use, subject to meeting the conditions under the conditional use section of this code.
Great. Thank you. Mr. DeGresio?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Christopher DeGresio from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Reeth. Here on behalf of the applicant, the trustees of Princeton University. As Michael indicated, this is an application for a minor site plan, conditional use application with a variance related to signage. As indicated, Princeton University Art Museum would like to temporarily occupy space in the downtown at a location known as 11 Hullfish. The last occupant, I believe, was Zo Retail Store, as Michael said, a clothing line. And I think they closed their doors in like 2017 or so. The space will be used for exhibitions and programs during the construction of the new Princeton University Art Museum. Since the university art museum will not be able to just have their programs that they typically have and not be able to display, this is a nice way to continue with art exhibitions, community events, interactive activities during that time period. As Michael said, in the central business, I mean, the central business district, the use is an educational institutional use, and it's permitted as a conditional use, assuming it meets the conditions in the statute, which is 17A307B7. It's conveniently outlined in the staff report from Michael, Derek, and James dated November 4, 2021. The conditions are pretty straightforward. A readily accessible for fire police protection. That's easily satisfied. Most of the other conditions talk about bringing a site plan, which we filed for, although this is an existing space, without any external changes. So we've asked for a couple of waivers with regard to submission requirements. But we've met all of these conditions. I think the focus on conditional use is subparagraph B, and that talks about it being in harmony with the district and it not have a significant impact to the environment in an adverse way and will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties. So that's really the focus of the conditional use standard. And in this particular case, you know, even though the standard focuses on whether it has any negative impact, it actually does the complete opposite. It has a wonderful positive impact on the downtown. It really enhances the downtown for a number of reasons, and we'll hear about it in a little bit. One, it will add diversity to the area, some type of use that's not really there right now. And it will actually help advance one of the critical goals of the Central Business District, which is essentially to create and maintain an active and vibrant downtown area. And it does this in two ways. First, it occupies what would be an otherwise vacant storefront, which has been vacant for a number of years now. And secondly, it will increase activity in the downtown area and hopefully foot traffic to the surrounding retail and businesses. So we think it's a really, really nice positive use for an otherwise vacant space. Before I turn it over to our, for our short presentation, I would like to mention we are requesting a variance related to signage. We submitted a signage package. I'm sure you've seen it, and we'll go through it very, very quickly in a little bit. But we basically are proposing awning signs, which are allowed under the code, so there's no variance there. We have a door sign, which is also allowed under the code, and there's no variances there. When we are proposing our window sign, we're showing an exhibition sign. Now, under your code, you're allowed to have business signs, and this is for exhibition, so it's really not a business sign. It's not advertising a business, so we need a variance there. Under your ordinance, the business signs are allowed up to 20 square feet. We're proposing to change this exhibition sign periodically as new exhibitions come in, up to about 16 square feet. We're just guessing a number, but we think we could pretty much work within that one. The first one that you'll see in the exhibits is about 8.25 square feet, but you'll see that. But we think as we add different names and different programs, there'll be a need for a little bit more space. So with that being said, I would like to introduce our first witness, James Stewart, Director of Princeton University Art Museum, who we will need to swear in.
Great. Welcome, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Stewart, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Don't sworn or affirmed?
Go right ahead.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, particularly for making time tonight after such an intense season to hear from us about this. I'm James Stewart, and I'm the Director of the Princeton University Art Museum, a role I've held for about a dozen years now. As you know, the Princeton Art Museum is one of the oldest collecting institutions in North America with collections of over 112,000 objects and a history of community engagement that goes back at least some 65 years. As you know, and as Michael has reminded us, the primary museum facility is now closed for three years for the construction of a wholly new art museum scheduled to open in late 2024. So let me bring up my slides.
I hope for, James, before we go on, for the record, this is a PowerPoint presentation that we're marking as Exhibit A1. And as you go through, if you could just identify the page that you're on, that'd be great.
Yep. So I'm on Slide 0 at the moment.
Zero or one?
Let's, just for kicks, let's start with one.
All right, well.
Our numbers are off.
Our numbers are off, but
oh, well.
Here's Page 1. In order to maintain the museum's educational mission and to benefit the diverse and vital communities that we seek to serve, we're proposing, as you've heard, to open a second gallery and educational space in downtown Princeton to operate from now through the fall of 2024, thus a period of approximately three years. This is Slide 2. In the absence of appropriate space in a campus-owned facility, we've leased the space at 11 Hullfish Street, a space of approximately 5,500 square feet, which we propose to use substantially as is conditioned in two primary ways. First, to host a gallery program of four exhibitions per year, typically featuring somewhere between 50 and 100 works of art, depending on their scale and the density of the installation. Second, to shape an activities and programming space to support drop-in and scheduled activities ranging from art-making workshops to discussions with artists and other educational programs. This is Slide 3. We plan to operate the space along hours matching those of Palmer Square, thus operating seven days per week, always free of charge and open to the public, including operating to the extended hours required of us during holiday season and other times of year, as indeed required by Palmer Square. Here you see a quick overarching statement of our overall project goal, which I will drill into in a couple of minutes, so I won't read this here. Rather than undertaking, this is Slide 4. Rather than undertaking extensive renovations, we plan to work with the raw industrial look and feel of the space as it exists now, including retaining the exposed ceiling and the track lighting that were installed by the previous occupant. Slide 5. This fortuitously aligns it with the feel of a downtown gallery space in an urban environment. It is a kind of recognizable environment within the art world. Slide 6. These are the existing conditions. As the slides note, this also minimizes the needed changes to the space and leaves it in a rather neutral condition for a subsequent tenant. Slide 7. There are numerous strategic benefits to be achieved in taking on such a space, which I want to now touch on briefly, which will be supplementary to the small-scale exhibitions that we are able to present in historic Bainbridge House. Notably, the opportunity to present meaningfully scaled exhibitions that continue to make art and humanities education available to the communities we serve, including, of course, our university students and faculty, who will use these exhibitions in their coursework and make class visits to the gallery space on foot. The opportunity to bring disparate audiences together in examining critical issues of our time through the relatively safe lens of art, and most particularly photography, which we propose to be the primary artistic focus of the space. The goal of creating a barrier-free experience of art in a highly visible storefront location with significant street-facing windows inviting entry and overcoming what in the retail world is often referred to as threshold resistance. The opportunity to sustain established partnerships with partners nearby, such as the Princeton Public Library, the Arts Council of Princeton, and a number of retail partners, as well as to develop new ones, including, we certainly hope, over these years with a number of regional artists. Slide 8. This level of activity would be expected to draw dozens or hundreds of visitors throughout the day, on any given day, many of whom will hopefully also frequent downtown shops and restaurants. What I'm showing you here is actually just a few glimpses of the furnishings we are proposing to deploy in these spaces to give you a kind of a sense of the kind of human ambiance of the space. Occupancy levels in the space, therefore, at any given hour of the day would be modest and equivalent to what we think we might find in other similarly scaled retail environments. Use of the program space at any given moment might be 10 to 20 users with a maximum activity capacity in that area of the space of 40 users. All of this works well for us within the existing code capacity of the space, which is approximately 100 people. Occasionally, but infrequently, the space might be used to host exhibition openings, to which attendance would be capped at 90 or within the existing code. The real focus, however, is on routine daily operations, allowing the space to be staffed by two museum staff at any given moment, who will park in existing university parking facilities. Thus, all of this is really to say that the proposed use provokes no need for additional parking relative to other retail uses, especially since many of our student and faculty users will come on foot. Slide 9. So now I want to just touch briefly, as you heard from Christopher, on our proposed signage plan. As you will see, we propose three forms of exterior signage. The first is awning signage that presents the name and logo of the space, linking it to the museum's identity. This is compatible with other Palmer Square locations that also like this, have multiple awnings. Slide 10. Here you see, whoops. Sorry. Slide 10, you see a detail of the way we propose to use the logotype we've developed for this space on each of the awnings. So this actually gives you a dimension for the space. Slide 11. The second form of signage is door signage, which, as Christopher notes, is also within the existing code. The door signage would exist in two locations, because there are two outside entry points into the space. And this will primarily, as you see here, reinforce the identity of the space and provide visitors and passersby with the hours of operation. Slide 12. The third form of proposed signage is window signage in a single location that would give the short title of the current or forthcoming exhibition, and thus would need to change about four times of year, but would operate within the proposed square foot limit. So here you see what is in fact an actual proposed title. This is prospectively the first exhibition we hope to present in the space, which refers, as it happens, not to a certain city in Florida, but to the title of a novel by Virginia Woolf and a film made of the same subject. So this is by way of example of a short exhibition title that operates within the space. So this is what Christopher noted, comes out to about 8.25 square feet. This would be in the form of film applied directly to the window panes. And then here on Page 13, the example of a longer exhibition title that we would propose for the same location, but because of the additional verbiage that would require three windows instead of two, and thus would extend to 13 and a half square feet approximately. And this is really the maximum that we imagine needing to help identify the exhibitions that will be found within the space.
But we've asked for up to 16, just in case something goes a little over. We don't have to want to have to come back with a separate application.
So really now, just to summarize and restate a bit, I've spoken to these points, however, briefly, but I do want to reiterate, I think, some of these core values and benefits and impacts. Bringing the town and the campus together through exhibitions and arts programming, engaging with compelling contemporary issues through the presentation of temporary photography-forward exhibition for the benefit of a variety of publics, providing a robust schedule of those exhibitions each year through the fall of 2024, as well as both scheduled and drop-in arts programming, all of which would be available free of charge, fostering a sense of community among diverse publics, affording new opportunities for partnerships in downtown Princeton, strengthening the vitality of the downtown in ways that we hope would be a benefit to all of our merchants, and finally advancing our mission of teaching and research and the public service and engagement. So that is the conclusion of my prepared comments, and I am again very grateful for the time and look forward to your questions and comments.
Thank you. Mr. DeGresio, do you have anyone else that you
No.
I'm not, I'm not saying you need anybody else. I'm just asking.
I have other people here, if there's questions that I can't answer. There was one other thing we would like to request, if the board is looking favorably on this application, that immediate occupancy is important for the holiday season. So we would like to be able to, if the board votes in favor, to be able to move forward with the project and not have to wait for the resolution. And in this particular case, where it's a use and not a site plan, where we're not doing any work, it's a fairly simple mechanism to move forward that way. So we would ask that the board consider that in its deliberations as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions from board members for Mr. Stewart? Mr. Chow?
Just, is there any chance that you'll have two exhibitions at the same time, and then the signage gets a little complicated where you want to list both of the exhibitions?
We have not proposed that, in part because of the square footage of the space that we've defined for gallery display. I think the public impact of the exhibitions is far stronger if it's a single project, so we don't really anticipate that scenario.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. La Place?
Thank you. James, I just wanted to confirm what you said about parking. You, well, first of all, a number of employees on site. You think that'll probably be about two in normal circumstances?
Correct. We are going, the idea is to have a cross-trained corps of gallery attendants who would also continue to staff the space in Bainbridge House, so they would move back and forth between the two venues. And we believe, because we do not have to have onsite human security officers during the hours of operation, that two gallery attendants would be appropriate to the space. And as I noted, these are museum employees, so they would have access to university parking.
That was my, I just wanted to confirm that that's great.
Yep.
And at a special, like, opening event, would there, is it, this is probably a hard feat to estimate, but what would be sort of the maximum number of employees?
Oh, that's an interesting point. That is a little bit harder to estimate. You know, because I'm happy to say our staff tend to robustly support our events, and the number of staff might choose to participate, but I think the number who would be required to staff it would probably be no more than five or six. And again, some of that is determined by the code limitations on occupancy, the fact that we don't propose to do events that would individually ever have more than 90 people in the building or in the space at one time.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Will there be any office space within the building? It will be all given over to exhibitions?
That's correct. There is a limited amount of back-of-house space that would really be used for temporary holding for art objects that are about to be installed, but there would be no office space on site.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Muller, do you have any concerns about our allowing immediate occupancy and not waiting to adopt a resolution? I mean, this sounds like a great, good. I just thought I should ask. Okay, and so when you say immediate, about when would you expect to open your doors?
Well, it's, we are doing some interior work, so I think the landlord may be doing some as well, like some ADA upgrades to the bathroom. So we're expecting maybe about December 4, I think, is the estimated goal, if things move forward smoothly.
Great. Well, this seems very cool to me. So any other questions from board members or from staff? And if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Oh, I
We have to open the meeting to the public.
I'm so sorry. I am just racing forward because the Nets are playing. Just kidding. I don't have any real expectation of seeing that.
We do, we have 18 members of the public in attendance, and no one has raised their hand yet.
Okay, well, I'll formally open the meeting for public comment, so anyone who is, from the public who is interested in posing questions or making comments, now is the time to do that. So I see two hands have been raised. So Carrie, could you bring
I am attempting to move up. I moved I am attempting to move up. I moved Lori Raybon over.
Okay.
And then we have the Arts Council.
Okay.
Princeton.
Okay. Ms. Raybon, we see your, oh, great. There you are.
A little slow this evening.
That's all right. Mr. Muller, while I'm the one who almost didn't call for public comment, so. Go ahead, Mr. Muller.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Lori Raybon, R-A-B-O-N, Vice President of Palmer Square.
Thank you, Ms. Raybon. Go right ahead.
I don't have a lot of comments because between Christopher and James, they said everything I was going to say, except for the fact that at Palmer Square, we are very excited at the prospect of having art on Wholefish. We know that from the nonprofits that we host annually, Homefronts Art Jam, Garden State Watercolor Exhibitions, where they raise money for, for their group, that the arts do bring people into the downtown. It gives them a, an experience, which is something that people are looking for now as they're visiting the restaurants, the retailers. I know from work on boards with James that he's dedicated to the entire downtown community and creating partnerships and relationships. So we are very excited. Not to mention the fact that this space has been empty for four and a half years, and it's been very difficult to find someone willing to move into the space and activate it. So we are really looking forward to this.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for your consideration. Okay, thank you. The next person to speak is Adam Welch from the Arts Council of Princeton.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do swear.
So sworn, so sworn. Could you please state your full name and spell your last name?
Adam Welch, W-E-L-C-H. I'm the Executive Director at the Arts Council Princeton, and I should say that I'm also a lecturer at the Princeton University. I am in support of this. I think what the gallery will bring to Wholefish is an amazing resource to not only the students of Princeton University, but to all of my members and all of my staff and students at the Arts Council. I, I, I see that the more art we can bring to town, the better. So I'm in a hundred percent agreement with this. And I believe strongly in James's directorship and his ability to increase the joy and all of the great opportunities that will come with his, with this new space. So I am in full agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Philip, I see, okay, you're bringing over Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
So I'll just say one more time, while Mr. Siegel is activating his video, anyone who wishes to speak now is the time to raise your hand. Okay, hi, Mr. Siegel. Can you unmute yourself, please?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
I so sworn or affirm. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Andrew Siegel, S-I-E-G-E-L. My family and I own Hamilton Jewelers at ninety-two Nassau Street, and I also live in the community where the arts, the art museum is planning on moving temporarily. I'm just calling in to voice my extreme support for this move. As a luxury retailer in town, we are at Hamilton incredibly focused on co-tenancy in the Central Business District with high-quality storefronts that encourage visitors, residents, and everyone in Princeton to come to and most importantly, stay in and browse in the downtown area. This part of Palmer Square where the art museum is planning on coming in will absolutely benefit from this traffic, which therefore will benefit the entire Central Business District. And I am calling in with my full support for this. I think they're going to be a great neighbor. And, and we look forward to having them in the, in the Palmer Square area.
Great, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Not seeing anyone else with the hand raised. So with that, I will conclude the public comment portion of the meeting. Any last questions or comments from board members?
I do have a, I do have a question.
Okay, Mr. Muller, you first and then Mr. La Place.
Um, Christopher, in terms of the submission waivers, could you just very, very briefly describe it? So I didn't, I didn't see anything.
For the site plan, we requested a waiver because we're utilizing existing tenant space that received site plan approval. So we didn't submit all the details that would typically be shown. We did that similarly with that eyeglass place not too long ago. Oh, that was before the zoning board, yes, but. So it's, I spent so many nights before Princeton boards, they all blend together after a while. But yes, that's, that, those are the submission items. We did provide a site plan checklist that goes through and marks the waivers that we requested. And that's part of the application that was submitted.
Right.
And I believe I saw in the memo from staff that that request was, was supported by staff. Is that correct, Mr. Bridger? I see, I see your actual face.
Yes, yes, Chairman.
Yeah, Eric, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you gave and may give will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so sworn.
Thank you.
Ms. Sax?
Oh, I, I, when Derek is, I just had a question when, sorry, I thought whenever Derek is finished.
I, I think he is. I just asked him i- if it were true that, that the staff supported the waivers, and he confirmed that they do.
Oh, okay. I just had a more general question. It seems like this is such an asset to that part of town, and I agree with all the comments, and it's, it's really exciting. And I, I fully support the opening as soon as possible. And I'm just wondering why only three years? Is there a, is there a chance that, that if things go well, that you might consider staying, especially given how long that, that spot has been empty?
So I guess I'll take that. I would say we are open-minded on that. And I certainly, you know, i- if there were to be delays in the construction of the new museum, we would very much want to look at that. I think the reality would ultimately be one of what level of operation we can afford to support. It will be a surprise to no one that space on Palmer Square is not free. And we're going to really, I think, have to evaluate it, including the level of, of audience hopefully that we find over these few years. So I would say I'm kind of ecumenical on the question, but ultimately, we will very much, you know, be privileging the new museum space and, and the budgetary needs of supporting that space.
Hey, great. That's a really good question. Thank you for that. And it makes me wonder whether when we frame the resolution, we should note a timeframe of longer than three years or, you know, at least five years or indefinitely, or whether we need to address the question of timeframe at all.
Not required to put a time limit.
Are not required? Okay.
And Michael, in relation to that, if I was going to ask you this, part of the standard for conditional use approval is conditional use approval shall be valid for one year. You know this, it's had in your memo. Unless preliminary approval of the site plan for a lot involving the condition use has been granted, at which time the applicant shall receive the same rights that anybody else receives the preliminary approval. I take it we're treating preliminary approval basically for these purposes as equivalent to, to minor site plan approval.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And let me ask you just one other question about, that probably the board isn't that familiar with. There's been a lot of staff going back and forth about the question of who classifies site plan as applications as minor.
Jerry, yourself?
The ordinance says one thing, but the municipal ordinance law makes it clear that the only bodies that can classify a site plan as minor is the, is the planning board itself, or I guess the zoning board, or a subcommittee of one of the boards. So I would think tonight, and Michael, I jump in, we'd want to get, we want to get classification as well as approval, assuming the board looks favorable upon this application.
Yeah, I would take care of that all tonight.
Okay. So all I have.
Great. Thank you, that's helpful. Other questions, comments? Oh, Mr. La Place?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say, I guess with my economic development hat on, that this is clearly, in my opinion, a home run for Princeton. Not only for the town of Princeton and our downtown, which is going into a, a critical season, you know, based on what we've been through the last twenty-four months or however many months it's been. But the idea of not having this expansive, empty storefronts on Wholefish, but instead having a vibrant draw that will bring people not only across Nassau Street from the university, but from throughout the region, I think it's just a home run. So I, I think it's fantastic. I want to, I want to say that I'm proud of the planning board for after an unbelievable run of meetings, you all decided to come this evening as well and set aside some time, because this is a time-sensitive application. The gallery wants to be up and running for the holidays. So again, this is a great example of Princeton, the town and the university working together in a great partnership. As you know, the university has committed to restoring Bainbridge House as an art space. They, they've brought over their art museum to Palmer Square. These have been wonderful ways to really engage in the, in the economic health of our Central Business District. And I think this is consistent with that commitment. So I, I'm thankful to the planning board for being here tonight to take this on, and I'm thankful the ongoing support of the university to our Central Business District.
Well said. Thank you. Are we ready for a motion now, or do we have any other questions or comments from board members?
I'd like to move the application with everything that Jerry is about to qualify.
Okay, so let me say what that would be. It would be minus site plan classification and approval, conditional use approval. I guess Christopher just said one sign variance for what we're calling a business sign. It could be up to sixteen square feet.
It, yeah, it, it needs a variance because it's not a business sign.
An exhibit sign.
Yeah.
Okay, good, great. Thank you very much.
Be clear, that's in the window area.
Which, by the way, I think is a really, really good thing to have. I, I'm, I was very glad to see that.
And then the submission waivers we talked about, and then immediate occupancy would be permitted.
Yes.
And I think.
Okay, that was.
I don't think there's any conditions.
Moved by Ms. Sax. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGowan. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Miss, Miss Cappizoli?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo Michael's comments and thank the board again for spending another evening with us. I know it was a lot in a row, but we really appreciate it, given the nature of this application and the timing. So thank you.
This was our pleasure. This is a really, really wonderful thing to see, and I'm, I'm glad that we could make it happen quickly.
Wonderful, thank you.
Was, didn't Mr. Taylor vote? Was he eligible to vote? Carrie?
Taylor is not here.
Oh, he's not here? Okay.
He did leave the woods from our tour of Landwin today. I can confirm that.
Because it's an.
We don't leave anyone behind.
So we don't, we don't, we don't need a search party, Mr. Tim?
No, no, I don't think we need to send a drone or a helicopter.
A non-quorum search party.
Or K-nine, no K-nines required.
No.
We sent our best three people and.
Yeah, yeah, it was great to see Tyler out there. Anyway, we're still recording. I'll, I'll move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
I will.
Is there a second? Mr. O'Donnell, second. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, wait, Carrie was going to say something.
Yeah, only I just wanted to let Mr. Welch know he's already spoken, and we no longer accept public comment. The motion's already been.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, he raises hand again, so.
Yeah, maybe it was a mistake, or maybe he's just saying thank you.
Okay.
Because I think along with everyone else, he was glad to see this happen. Thanks, thanks for bringing that up, Carrie.
Thank you.
So there was a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed, no one's abstaining. Thank you, everybody.
I still think we should have that Thanksgiving board meeting. I think DeCresia, he'll be available.